Everyone, thank you for attending tonight's work session meeting. I'm gonna ask you to rise and stand to salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, okay, now, we share the table, okay?
I got you. I was just opening stuff up.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10th and September 13th, 2023, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, Tap into, and the Clerk of Municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this board may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Centron.
Present.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Present.
Mrs. Fleming.
Present.
Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Rosada-Casada. Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo. Dr. Berghammer.
Present.
At this time, I'd like to welcome members of the public. Desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating or enlisting your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes. Do we have any comments from the public? Anyone online? Thank you. I'll hand this meeting over to the Superintendent for the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. On Thursday evening at our board meeting, we will be, I'll be sharing some great news in recognition to things going on for the month of September and also preparing for the upcoming school year. We'll als- I'll also be sharing just data on our student enrollment as we are continuing with, next week will be, we'll close out this month on the 16 days students will be present in school. And that's all I'm sharing for this evening.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to board agenda items, starting with the education report.
The Education Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendents, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items number one through eight, on pages five through 12, are seeking to approve various services and placements for the Special Education Department. Items number nine and 10, on pages 13 and 14, are to approve in-district special education programs and classes. Item number 11, on page 15, is to approve field trips. Copies are in the hands of board members. Item number 12, on page 15 and 16, is to amend previous items on past education reports. Item number 13, on pages 16 through 20, are to approve the use of facilities for various school events throughout the school district. Item number 14, on pages 21 through 27, is seeking to approve professional development for district staff. Item number 15, on page 28, is to approve the participation of our student groups in our Linden Halloween Parade on Sunday, October 23rd, on Sunday, October 22nd. Item number 16, on page 28, is to approve the enrollment of a charter school student. Item number 17, on page 28, is to approve outside presenters to conduct training for staff and district. Item number 18, on page 29, is to approve the payment related to family engagement events that will be taking place for the 2324 school year. Item number 19, on page 30, is seeking to approve the Language Proficiency Team, which is a multidisciplinary team, which will be servicing our multilingual learners. Item number 20, on page 30, is to approve the payment of an ediscier course to fulfill a high school graduation requirement for a student. Item number 21, on pages 31 through 33, is seeking to approve the Behavior Threat Assessment Teams, which is in accordance with state law. Item number 22 and 23 is to approve the revised handbooks for our secondary levels, including both middle school and high school. Item number 24 through 27 are to, are to approve the writing, posting, and grading of lesson plans for language arts, math, science, and social studies. Item number 28, on page 34, is to approve our PSAT testing, which will be taking place on October 25th. Item number 29 is to approve a delayed opening for our students who are not taking the PSATs on October 25th. Item number 30, on page 34, is to approve delayed openings for the NJGEPA testing, which will be taking place for students. Item number 31 is to approve the annual school self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. Item number 32, 33, and 34, on page 34, are regu- are regarding the submission of fiscal year IDEA reports. Item number 35, on page 35, is regarding the submission of a grant for the New Jersey Learning Tutoring Acceleration Program for grades three through five. Item number 36 is to approve a transition planning program for our high school special education students. Item number 37, on page 35, is to approve the establishment of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee for the 2324 school year. Item number 38 is to approve bilingual teachers who will be conducting parent workshops throughout the school year. Item number 39 is to appoint Ms. Colish as our Kane Scholar Academy Liaison for the 2324 school year with no cost to the district. Item number 40 is to approve ILT members, which is our Instructional Leadership Team, to attend Data Review Members, which will take place after school for the 2324 school year. Item number 41 is to approve in-district presenters to facilitate PD to our Instructional Leadership Team members for the 2324 school year. Item number 42 is to approve clinicians from Jersey Innovative Services who will be providing clinical services to a school six student. Item number 43 is to grant approval for the Linden High, for Linden High School to institute the Community Cleanup Initiative. Item number 43, on page 36, is to proclaim October as the National Bullying Prevention Month. Various activities will be taking place throughout the school district. Item number 44 is to proclaim the month of October as Polish-American Heritage Month. Again, various activities will be taking place throughout the school district. And item number 45, on page 37, is to also proclaim October as National Principals Month.
Ms. Lewis, are there any board comments?
I just have one comment, and that's just, you have two 43s. It's just an easy fix.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Yes, I also have a comment. Number 16, is that a student enrolling on us or a student going to charter school?
That is for a student attending an outside charter school.
An outside charter school?
Yes.
I'll have a second part to that question later on another part of the agenda.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I have, I have a question. Madam Superintendent, Madam President, today. On item number 39, I know we see that we appointed Maria Colish to serve at the Keen Scholar Academy Liaison. I know that in the high school, she is in charge of the library, and there is no one there but her. How is, would this take away from her time as being the, the person in charge of the library in the high school?
Good evening, Madam President. And the answer is no, it will not. She's currently serving as the liaison. Ms. Lewis has been working with our Kane Scholars. These are the students, we have six that are going out to Keen once a week, and Ms. Colish has been assisting. And because she's there with them daily, we wanted to appoint her as that point of contact to just continue with the partnership.
All right, that's good. Another question I wanted to ask is about item number 43. Could someone expand on how this, how our Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, how, how will it work? And how are we gonna incorporate our community? Or is it just directly school-based?
Yes, so for, the entire month of October is proclaimed as National Bullying Prevention Month. So throughout the entire month, our schools will be doing various activities related to anti-bullying prevention efforts. So for example, some of the schools might be doing assemblies. Some of our social workers and counselors will be going into the classroom and providing specific support related to anti-bullying prevention. We might be doing workshops for teachers. So all of that information will be forthcoming.
So do we have a calendar of all these events for the month of October that we could possibly invite parents? Or could some of this information be done virtually so that we could get parent participation? Or is it just directly for students?
A lot of the activities are specifically for students, but throughout the school year, as part of our parent universities, we'll be doing information where we can strengthen our parent and school partnerships.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one again, sorry, I was, this is big. This is big.
Just a question about what Dr. V was asking for 43. Is it possible to text the parents, let them know what's going on? Like, if you're saying that you have the various activities, because, you know, sometimes there's a gap between the students and parents and informing them. So is it possible to text the parents, let them know today they did such and such for HIV?
We can definitely create some literature regarding district-wide events and share that with the community.
Thank you.
When I was the principal elementary as well and secondary, those events, it would be on a weekly calendar that we did send out to parents. Like, one day maybe to, let's stand together and wear red in honor of, you know, solidarity. So it's a lot of unified programming that takes place. But each school should be sending out what they're doing for the entire, normally it's a week, that they may select to do different events. But we'll make sure that it's also on our website and available to everyone.
Thank you. You ever remember seeing that for the elementary level, but not middle school, high school, not so much? Okay, thank you.
I think the more, the better. However, we can, you know, do the outreach. But texting is probably a really great idea, just a reminder, because I'm a parent with a lot of kids and a lot going on. So I'll forget, and then I'll get a text, and I'll say, oh, I have to be there today. Like, it'll just bring it back. So I think the IT has a, a way that they can shoot out a mass text like that, is that correct?
Definitely.
Okay, great.
It's like a robo-text, it's like a robo-text, where they do like?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good idea.
Yes, the reason why, I'm sorry if I'm asking all these questions, but we have a lot of parents and even community members and council people that are very, very concerned about our, our, our anti-school violence campaign and what type of campaign that is going on in our school district to help reduce school violence. Of course, you know, you could never, if two kids wanna fight, you know, you can't stop it, but you have to be there to make sure it does not. You know, we, we have to do our best. Would like somebody to expand, I see we just added 43. Could somebody explain 43 for me?
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Koontz over the weekend in regards to volunteering services for students. And Saturday programming that takes place at the high school, he would like, he did this program last year where he provided the students and the teachers with different skills to help build up the community. So by speaking with him this weekend, he, he decided that this would be good to carry it on again for this school year. It wasn't on the agenda last month. And so again, these are for students who may have been assigned Saturday programming, and they'll be participating in cleaning up the community.
So is this, 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 this number 43? Help me to understand, because I wanna be clear, all right? Does it mean that students who have misbehaved, would it be part of their, I do not know if I'm saying the wrong word, so forgive me if I am, rehabilitation, that we are gonna get them involved in community cleanup? Is that possible, Mr., Mr. Garcia? As part of the, the, you know, we have these students, like, for example, if a student gets into some sort of infraction in the school, altercation, and they are out for five days, could that, part of that five days be used for community cleanup and different stuff? Is that, is that stuff we can do?
There are a wide variety of options you have when it comes to discipline. But because it's student disciplinary issues, we'll discuss. I'll answer those questions for you in executive session.
But we wanna find ways to, to not have, you know, some of these students get involved in fights, and they use the five days as a vacation. We want to use the five days for work. We need to put them to work, maybe doing something else if we can. What do you guys think?
I like that. I think that's a great idea.
In the Student Code of Conduct that's found in our Student Teacher Parent Handbook, it states that for any infraction, let's say that a student does get into a fight, and they are given out-of-school suspension, there's points associated with that. So let's say a fight may be three points. If they have in-school suspension, that may be one point. But part of the Code of Conduct is also to ensure that students have an opportunity to rebuild up and to remove those points. So we have a point reduction system in there. If a student does not have any infractions over a period of time, one point will be removed. If they do some form of community service, and they bring a letter in and give it to the vice principal, the vice principal can determine if that will allow for point reductions as well. Students cannot have a certain amount of points in order to go to school-wide events. So let's say if you have seven points, you, and if you have more than seven points, you can't go to the dance. So the goal is always to help rehabilitate students for those behavioral points that they may receive for any infraction that they take place. So they can also write a letter for their behavior and bring it to administration. That can be another layer for them to earn points back. So those systems are in place as aligned to our Code of Conduct as well as positive behavior support in schools for students to rehabilitate and, and learn from their mistakes and earn back space and time.
So you are saying, help me to understand. One of the, 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 I can't find the word. Today is losing me. I never, I'm always, never have problems with words.
Every consequence will have a point.
But my, like, for example, let's assume we have a game, and students get involved in a fight at a game. Would there be not allowed, would we stop them from coming to maybe three other games? Like, for example, you know, so if they come to a basketball game, or they come to a football game and they get involved in a fight, would we stop them from coming to every other game? Would we suspend them for three games? Do we have that in place right now?
So what we have is a suspension for whatever the behavior is. And if they're on suspension, they cannot participate in events. If that is also decided by, like, you know, administration, that it also entails that, no, you're not allowed to come back to X event, then yes, that's written in their Code of Conduct for that student. But again, school-sponsored events, basketball, sporting events are school-sponsored events. And students are expected to follow our Code of Conduct for school-sponsored events. And if they do not, then yes, we have the right to remove them from that.
I have a question. So for the volunteer work, where they have to bring in a letter to get the point reduced, that's done outside of their suspension, right? Or it can be done at any time, at any point?
Well, that's done, if they get an infraction, they get a disciplinary point, however many points that, yes, let's say, again, I, I have four disciplinary points because Saturday program, and I, they accumulate it. Within 30 days, if I did do outside community service, I could bring that letter in and ask for those points to be reduced.
My question is, is there a way to get them, before we even get to that point, is there a way to actually have, like, what like Dr. Berghammer was saying, while they're suspended, that suspension be used as like them going to do volunteer work, or them volunteering at some, like, you know, cleanup service, or maybe at some, a nursing home, something that can get them involved while they're actually away? Because what if there's not an incentive? Let's say I get into a fight, and there's seven points that you need to not be able to participate, but I only have five points. I might not have that incentive to go out. And I think it's a great, I still think it's a great program, so I'm not discrediting it. But just maybe having like that, that extra incentive to kind of, you know, while they're suspended, actually go out and do something productive?
To answer, oh, I thought you were saying?
Even the policy that we do have in place, it permits them to offset the points by going out and doing volunteer work. It doesn't, they're not required to do it. Again, I, this is not really a conversation that I wanna have out in the, out in the open. But yeah, there, there would be some issues we would have to discuss before we ever attempted to try to compel someone to volunteer with an outside agency in order to offset disciplinary action.
Just to turn it around, just to change things up a little bit. Can we have folks have, you know, help out with community service too, instill pride in all of this without being in trouble? Do we have, like, t-shirts or something to hand out to teach them? Because I think community service is great. We're all doing community service right now. None of us get paid. We do this because we love it, and we wanna be involved in our community. So it, it instills a sense of pride, but for our children so that they can learn the same, the same thing.
We have that in place. Yes, we have our Kiwanis group, our K kids, where our students, they volunteer to service our community. We also have our OTC students, where they have to have hours for volunteering. We were just talking today about school number nine, and their affiliate, across the street from them, they have the nursing home. I believe that's what it is. But the students go over there and volunteer there. So yes, we do have many opportunities where we expose our students to learning about community service. And I just wanna clarify that the point system isn't just related to community service, but it's written in the Code of Conduct to say that you have a behavior infraction. It could be anything. And those points will stay on your discipline record, but there's opportunities to decrease those points. So it, it can range from, like I said, you know, having great behavior for 10 days, and then that may reduce a point. So it's, it's written in the handbook, and we can talk about it further.
I do like this point, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I do like this point reduction system. How long does it stay on the disciplinary record? How long would a point stay? I don't know.
It all depends on the behavior, but we can talk, I can show you exactly what.
Okay, and, and, thank you. And who would determine, like, what area would be the cleanup?
For this one here?
Yes.
Mr. Koontz.
Mr. Koontz?
Yes, this is for the Linden High School.
I know some parents might be, like, maybe worried, like, if they're on a busy road, and that's why, that's why I was asking, like, he would determine the areas.
He would determine it, but he would also have to get permission from the parents to, for the students to participate in it. It's not mandatory.
Okay, thank you. And?
I was gonna wrap it up. Is there something else?
Yeah, just one more. I just wanted to go over item 21. Page 31, 31 to 33, or 34. 30, 33. I see we have this Behavioral Threat Assessment Team. And I know we can't get into deep stuff, but again, is a calendar would be sent out to parents with an explanation of the type of training the students will be getting?
The Behavior Threat Assessment Team is constructed of the school personnel. The Behavior Threat Assessment Team is to identify a student who may be at risk for self-harm or may get involved in some violent act. The team is constructed of multiple people, from principal to teacher to a nurse to an aide. It is state mandated that we create the team this year. We just had the board policy approved last month stating that we had to create this team. So if someone is, a student is in school, and they make a comment, or if they say, do a behavior, then the Behavior Threat Assessment Team has a checklist that they go through and communicate with the appropriate personnel to make sure that that student is not at risk. So the team, the Behavior Threat Assessment Team is not something that we give to parents because we can, the policy is there online that indicates that we have the team and what it will provide to our, for our students. But it's individualized for any student that may exhibit a behavior that we believe that entails the team to get activated and support.
The problem we are getting from parent is that because of the fact that a lot of this is gauged towards the student, some parents believe that we are doing nothing because of the fact that not enough information is given to parent as to what we are actually doing. So you would have parents say, where this happening? You guys not doing anything. And I know that we are doing a lot. So I do not know how we could bridge. We have to get a better bridge as to what the parent know and what the children are actually doing. I do not know if you guys understand what I'm saying.
I do, and I just wanted to conclude that with, during our committee meetings, we did talk about enhancing the communication amongst the district and the parents in our community. So the district will be working on sending out those messages via text, via Class Dojo, via Genesis, and so forth and so on. Is there anything else regarding education?
Yes. Now that I was looking at this school-based Behavior Threat Assessment Team, why would McManus have the most people on the team, and the high school will have not as many on the team? So if we look at page 33, I'm looking at McManus, you have a few more people than the high school, and the high school is one of the biggest, and our team is not that big.
There is a criteria, this is what Mr. Koontz submitted, and it does look like he did leave off teachers. Teachers need to be on this. So we will update the agenda item to reflect that the team has all personnel that needs to be on there.
Are there any other questions? Being that this is the work session, we know that a revised agenda will be out on Thursday. So whatever's missing here, it will be on Thursday. We're gonna move on to the finance report.
Thank you. On Thursday night, the Finance Committee, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, will be presenting the following motions. Motions one through five are our normal monthly approvals, approving the Board Secretary and Treasurer's report, approving transfers, approving payment of payroll, as well as the bills list, and then approving the Student Activities Report. Resolution number six is seeking amendment on two previously approved resolutions. The first one is for amending our contract and the approval of that contract with Atlantic Business Products, who is going to be providing us copier services. The increase represents two additions to the contract. One is for an additional machine at the AOE, and that's something that just got added after consultation with Jen Smith's office. And the other is for cloud fax services. This will allow us to abandon our current fax machines to utilize the machines that were being provided by Atlantic Business. We would be able to utilize basically web-based being provided by Atlantic Business. We would be able to utilize basically web-based faxing rather than using the hard line of a phone system. So we would be able to actually, and while this price is going up, we're going to be reducing the number of phone lines that we have in the district because those are dedicated towards fax lines. So while there's an increase on here, we'll be decreasing costs elsewhere in the budget. A resolution in regards to Campbell Fire Protections, this is to better represent the services that are being provided as well as to account for the fact that we have a different vendor who's going to be providing the oversight on the, on the fire alarm systems, and we'll see that resolution in a little bit. Resolution number seven is a fundraiser that's being done by the Linden Football Team through Buffalo Wild Wings. There's gonna be discount cards as well as gift cards that are going to be distributed. And anybody who has this card and makes a purchase at the Buffalo Wild Wings in Linden, ten percent of those proceeds will be going towards the football team at the end of the season. A resolution eight is for SQL database generation for SNAP data storage. This is in regards to the student, or rather for data, data information that we have for the switch over. Resolution number nine is for GoFan. This is for digital ticket sales. This would be in lieu of purchasing physical tickets. This would allow for tickets to be purchased through people's phones and then to, again, rather than having it a physical ticket. Resolution ten is to approve fans, refrigerators, stoves, ovens, washing machines, and dryers throughout the district. A lot of these items you'll see are either in the faculty rooms or going to be utilized in science rooms, in the life skills rooms. But by code, we are supposed to grant approval each year for the use of these items. Resolution number eleven is for approving the standard, or rather revision to our standard operating procedures manual. There's a SOP that governs the operations of many of the business office functions in consultation with our Transportation Department and our Special Ed Department. We wanted to make some adjustments to our transportation, transportation procedures, specifically in regards to drop-off of students when parents were not, parents or guardians weren't at the pickup spot. Resolutions twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are accepting donations. Twelve is to accept a donation from Blackboard, it's something that we've been receiving every month now. Resolution thirteen is accepting the Special Olympics Grant in the amount of $600. Resolution fourteen is accepting donations of trumpets as well as fans that were donated to school nine. And resolution fifteen is for COVID test kits that were donated from the Union County Health Department. These kits will be available to be given to families in need of the test kits. Resolution sixteen is to grant approval to submit the 2023 ESA final expenditure report. This is going to be the report that we submit to the state that basically lays out all of the spending that we did for our Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV funds during the 2022-23 school year. Resolution seventeen is approving the installation of fences at school number one for the parking lot. There was a concern expressed by the school principal, and we had a consultation with maintenance and our security department to discuss the fact that we had basically drivers cutting through that area, which we were concerned about with the children who play out in that playground area. So this would be to install fences on both ends. I'm trying to think, it's, it's our side of the street, which is, what side is that?
Gibbons?
What was that?
Gibbons?
Yes, Gibbons, and then the other side.
Fertis?
Yes. To prevent people from cutting through. Resolution number eighteen is to install a fence for basically a small playground area, a small area for our, I believe it's a pre-K student at school number nine. That's to put a fence around. We're also gonna be looking at eventually putting down some rubber mulch. It's an area right outside a classroom door. Resolution number nineteen is to have alarm and communications technologies to provide the fire alarm monitoring. This was the amendment that I was speaking about previously. They will be handling our monitoring services for the 23-24 school year. Resolution number twenty is to approve M&amp;M Construction, which is our time and material vendor, to install new lighting and ceiling tiles at the hallway ceiling, ceiling near the entrance by the gymnasium at Soul Middle School. This was as a result of a walkthrough conducted with the Board President. Resolution number twenty-one is to approve the installation of a split system in room 351. This is for an office that does not have air circulation. Resolution number twenty-two is approving Mathusec to provide concrete corrections for the gym floor at school number five. After they had ripped up the floor, as you recall, we also did asbestos abatement there. They are requesting because of the unevenness of the, of the concrete underneath the gym floor, that these corrections be made so that the floor can be down and everything be level. Resolution number twenty-three is for technology needs for contracts for the 23-24 school year. I'd previously sent out further detailing to the committees in regards to what the contracts were covering. Resolution twenty-four is to approve a contract with All Shifts LLC to provide nursing staffing. We have a need for a one-to-one nurse for one of our students, and we actually might have a slight revision to this contract. We did, initially, we're looking at having nurses from this company be provided for busing that we needed, or rather, covering bus routes. We were actually able to cover that with the substitute hire that we have on under Personnel, which we will discuss later. But we, we do still have a need for a one-to-one nurse aide for one of our students, so we are looking to approve the contract with them. Resolution twenty-five is for the disposal of surplus equipment, violin, two violins and one clarinet. Resolution number twenty-six is to approve Akerson Drapery. They have been providing lockdown door shades and curtains throughout the district. We began using, or we started working with them in the 22-23 school year. We're continuing to work with them during the 23-24 school year. So we're looking to cover as an, as an, I'm sorry, as a, as needed basis, not to exceed $75,000 for the 23-24 school year, and they are part of a co-op bid. Resolution twenty-seven is to authorize the business office to go out to bid for the HVAC replacements. As you recall, as part of our ESSER bid, or rather, ESSER grant, as well as a ROD grant that we've received, we are looking at doing HVAC work at school four, school eight, school nine, and school ten. Resolution number twenty-eight is to approve the district to join the Hunterton County Educational Services Commission co-op. This would be a purchasing co-op, which would allow us to utilize pricing that the Hunterton County ESC is able to acquire for its members. Resolutions twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one are new resolutions from our committee meeting. This is for approval of temporary facilities, which are the trailers at school six and the high school. It's also for approval of kindergarten rooms that do not currently have bathrooms within them. You need to have an alternate method of compliance for these rooms to basically state how the students in those rooms would be able to go to the bathroom, or rather, make it to the bathroom. And thirty-one is for basically rooms that are split. The rooms listed here are actually have a divider up within them and have multiple, whether it's a small group instruction on one side or offices on the other, but we have various rooms throughout the district that are currently being split. In addition, we do have a bid that we have not yet received back from Ed Data, which will most likely, we should be getting it this week. So it might be an additional agenda item that we're looking at doing. And finally, just two other items I want to touch on. The audit has started today. The auditors are in checking our 2022-23 finances and our, and our operations. It should take a couple of weeks, and then we should have an audit presentation to the board at some point in the near future. And finally, the school boards convention is at the end of next month. So if anybody has anything, changes or anything from what you've told myself or, or offices, please let me know if you have anything that you want to change, dates that you're going down for it. If you want to go, if you don't want to go, just please let us know. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Are there any board comments or questions?
Yes. On page sixty-nine, can you explain number eleven for me, please? Provide the revision standard operating procedures?
Yes. The, a couple of years ago, the state of New Jersey came out and they basically said every school district has to create standard operating procedures. And it basically discusses all of the various operations of the district, or rather, on the business side. So, you know, how transfers are done, how the budget is put together. And as I stated, one of the things that when we were discussing it, or rather, there was an incident where, you know, we were discussing it in transportation, and there was no language that spoke to the procedures that were in place if a student, especially a special, especially a special ed student, if they were brought to their drop-off point at the end of the day and the parent wasn't there, what would the procedures were? So we consulted, again, with the Transportation Department as well as the Child Study Team. We came up with various, you know, basically items of what we would do. I could certainly let you know. You know, it speaks about, you know, out-of-district students, in-district students, and you know, what the bus company will do in terms of, you know, circling back to see if the parent is there, you know, who they're going to contact. If the parent isn't there, where to bring the student if there is nobody there at the stop, especially if they go through a second time, what to do if the parent is habitually not at the home or not at the stop, as well as, you know, who's supposed to be contacting who.
So they will have, the parents' information will be approved and everything, right? They'll, the information will be correct with the parents? They will have all the information that they needed?
Yes, you know, we have for these, we have all this information on the student, you know, and the, especially on, on the out-of-district students, they're typically, the bus companies will have some of that information as well. But, you know, it speaks to who to call at the business office as well as, you know, who we're supposed to contact. So basically, everyone knows who's supposed to be doing what.
Okay, thank you.
And can you make sure-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you make sure that we get a copy of the changes that you're making?
Sure.
Thanks.
And can you explain, on page sixty-nine, number thirteen, except the Special Olympics grant an amount of $600?
Yes.
So small.
Well, I didn't handle the, the application. I don't know, Paul wanted to speak on it real quick.
Please, Paul, thank you.
Yeah, so basically, the Special Olympics Office said that they received a huge amount of interest this year from different school districts, and they were given limited funds, so they had to evenly try to divide it among the school districts and charter schools that applied.
Okay. Now, being that you said that, what would this in detail with the Olympics for the children as well as for the staff, as well as that, all that applied for this, what would this in detail? Because this $600 is not gonna go too far. So what are you gonna do and how is it gonna come back? Because, you know, the kids, we gotta have the kids in it, and you have to have supervision, and you have to have qualified people working with these students. So how are we gonna do that with $600?
Well, I could speak to that. When, and we know that there's a significant interest from the board and the community in regards to this. What we discussed at the administration, and we talked about it in finance, was supplementing this amount with, with local funds so that the, I guess, the vision of what we were looking at having done can be accomplished.
So yes, programming is still in place. Mr. Olivera, you have that, we have an outline of what that's gonna look like, date, times, the events. We're also seeking approval this evening to approve the, a job posting for a Special Olympics athletic coach to help oversee with this programming. So it's still being carried out with fidelity.
And with this being said, will the, will be less meaning children? It would be, or what is that?
The grant is just supplemental funds. I don't think that we were ever counting on the grant to cover all of our costs. It's just to offset our costs.
Good question.
I had a quick question, too.
Yeah?
About agenda item number ten, and this might be a silly question, but do the students have access to the washer and dryers? Like, if a student had like a poor living situation and maybe they confided in a teacher, would they be able to wash their clothes there or dry their clothes if, if that was like done, facilitated properly? Or are those not like the proper washer and dryers for that?
Well, the washer and dryers that are listed here are typically for the life skills. It's for, you know, I would always say like home ec. On those individual cases, I don't know what, what the procedures are at the school. I couldn't see somebody saying no, but I'll leave it up to it to you. I mean, no, I'm saying, you're a principal.
Yeah, I was just curious. Because I figured it was for probably not, obviously, for that usage, but I was just wondering if it, if it could go-
Off the top of my head, if we have a policy that specifically addresses it, but to echo John, I'm sure that I speak on behalf of all district staff when I say we're always gonna look to make sure that our students have everything that they need, both inside this building and outside this building, to the best of our ability. So if there was, if there was a way for us to assist them and let them use it, I'm sure we're gonna, you know, exhaust all avenues to allow them to do that.
Would there be a way for them to be aware that this option exists if needed?
I'm sure that there's a way. What, what that way would be is probably something, you know, and sort of what the pros and cons of, of that are is something that we should discuss, I think, in close session.
Even if it's good, we do want to have a hundreds to this.
No, no, I definitely get, I definitely get that. Yeah, I definitely get that.
Yes, oh, Lord. I have a question, though. Number nine. I know we started to get digital tickets, right? But my question is, at some of the games, I think we are limiting that students fifteen years old must buy tickets with parent. They cannot attend any of these games without an adult. How does the buying tickets digitally work out when we have this restriction?
I presume you still have to have an adult with you when you present the e-ticket.
Exactly. You, anybody could buy a ticket.
You'd still have to have an adult.
But you can't get through the gate with somebody under fifteen. You have to have an adult.
So would that be in our, when we putting it up under the, the, the system that they could buy ticket, we making it clear that any student under the age of fifteen that purchasing tickets must have an adult or parent or guardian with them to the game?
Yeah, we could, I could speak to the athletic director about what the website would look like. The, and I don't want to, you know, if a student showed up and they had purchased a ticket and we didn't allow them in, we could certainly refund them the money as well. I mean, not that I'm saying I want the kid to go there and then have to walk back, but I would have to check to see if, what, what language we could get onto on that website. I would have to check to see if, what language we could get onto on that website.
Okay, another question. I see that you put in air conditioning in many of the schools. I know we have to deal with climate change and because of climate change, we had to have a lot of half days last year. How is this going to work? Are we going to just air condition parts of the school or how is it going to work with the projects that we are doing? I see that you said that we are doing school four, eight, nine, and 10. Is it a whole school or how is, how is, how is it going to work?
Well, we're looking at doing all of the classrooms. The, I'm sorry. We were looking at school four, I believe half of it is already done. We're looking at doing the remainder of it. We're basically looking at doing all the classrooms if we can get the common areas in there as well. But the, you know, the plan is to do all of the schools in the district, you know, just like we spoke about with the playgrounds. We don't want to show that, you know, we're doing for some, we want to do for all, especially as it regards to ACs and the like. It just becomes a question of funding and timing on it. But we are, like I said, it, when we got here, there was, or rather, when, not when we, when I got here in January, that was one of the things that we, I noticed, that we did have money set aside for the HVAC projects. So we, with that money that was set aside, we were looking at doing as many as we could with that amount. But I'm fairly confident, you know, that we'll be putting forward and with the board's blessing, you know, for the 24, 25 budget to have additional HVAC done throughout the district.
That's good. That's good. Sam, this should be your question, number 29. You do number 29. That should be your question.
That happens.
Yes.
So number 29, can you elaborate more? What are we going to use that facility for?
For the trailers at school six.
High school.
The high school, there's four trailers there. One is used for the athletic department. I think one is a spin classroom that, I don't know how often the spin class is happening. I think one is an office. I don't have all, I could get you the details on it for Thursday night. The school six, again, I think one of the room, off the top of my head, I don't want to speculate on what all the rooms are used for.
I think, let me help you a little bit. I believe the question that we're really getting to is the small children in trailers in an area where they can't get out and, you know, wander around. I think, I think that's where we're going with this, right?
Other security issues because.
Security.
When we had that, I forgot what year it was, but that terrorist that was putting the bombs in New York City and he ended up in Linden and on Elizabeth Avenue and started shooting at cops. School six, excuse me, school six was one of the schools that was involved and there was little kids and that, and those trailers. The reason why I've been pushing so much to get rid of these trailers is because if that guy was that crazy and he would have had a machine gun, would have gone to that school and just shot up right through there, there's no protection for students in those classrooms or staff. And that's the reason why those trailers have been here. They said they were going to be temporary. And 25 years later or 20 years later, they're still there and we were using them as classrooms until that situation happened. We finally were able to push the students out and if we're going back to push students back in, that defeats the purpose.
Well, I don't think it's necessarily that if, and I apologize if it says classroom trailers, the fact that we have trailers on site, even if they're used for storage or office space or whatever they're used for, you're supposed to, because it's a temporary facility, each year you do need to do an approval of it because it wasn't a part of your, you know, initial plans for the building, that this county and the state need to know that you still have trailers on site. So if, if the board hadn't moved people out of there, again, I will find out specifically what's going on in those classroom, or rather, in those trailers. And then we could, you know, certainly speak to the principal in regards to that.
Okay. Mr. Serapilia, I know that when we took over tour of the schools and because, you know, I know that this is one of Sam's, Sam really concerned about what we're going to be doing with school six and the trailers. I would, I thought that one of the things we had agreed upon is to have maybe a feasibility study or some sort of study to know how we are going to build or how we are going to go about adding space to school six because it's a big project. You have to remember, we also have problems with how the students get in transportation, entering the building, leaving the building. So it's more than just building. It's about comfortability of student and parent movement. So I would imagine you said that we're going to do some sort of study to figure out how we're going to build?
Well, we have, we have two things that are going on simultaneously. We had the architect initially walk the facility to look at it. We are also getting a demographic study, which is going to discuss, or rather, you know, at least to try to predict what the enrollments are going to look like for the next couple of years for Linden. The, the concern that we would have is if you don't have the justification for the increasing enrollment for, let's say, a particular school. And I don't want to get too technical, the state has things that are called unhoused students, which basically says, here's the layout of your school, here's the number of classrooms you have, here's the number of students that you have. And it's, it'll say, if you don't have any unhoused students, they're not going to give you funding for additional space or they might not even approve because they'll say, you know, you don't necessarily need this. What we were looking at doing in conjunction with the, because we're, you know, we've, we heard you, we want to do the addition, we're just trying to figure out what would be in the addition, whether it needs to be geared more towards elementary type classrooms because we could always do pre-K classrooms. We always have that need based on our, our numbers that we have for our pre-K program in regards to the additional funding that we're getting from the pre-K. So we do have, you know, that in mind with the architect in regards to what we're looking at doing. I know when we had had a meeting with the architect and the finance committee, it was, you know, put as many classrooms there as possible. It comes down, because I know when we talked about it, we had also said maybe we want to do office space on there. And I think it's, it's not something that we want to do just, just for school six. I think it has to be kind of a district wide, like, what are we doing for facilities throughout the district? Because like I said, we do have a lot of other moving parts as I think we've kind of, you know, touched on and some things that maybe we haven't touched on in regards to some of the needs. But we, we, they, they, you know, we've walked the site, they basically have an idea of what the addition would need to look like. I think it's just a question of the number of classrooms. And like I said, we, we were, the demographic study, which we should be getting back in a couple of weeks, will give us an idea of where we're at in terms of the enrollment or where the enrollment should be going. Because like I said, there's also, and the demographer will be, because I know there's a lot of work that's being done right around there, you know, additional apartments that are going up. And, you know, it's certainly a question of the number of students that they think will be coming from those new, that new construction.
I think, I'm sorry, I think my second part of the question from the previous question is coming up now. So I know, I may be too ahead of myself, just let me know. We were talking about the academy that we're renting or leasing now at $600,000 a year that we've been considering on letting go. Okay? Which I still believe it would be a bad idea because there may be some people in the community that might try to take that as a charter school. If they take that as a charter school that comes into our budget, that we have to pay for budget that. I personally don't think we should pay for a charter school. Okay? And if we are in need of more classrooms, I know I did a tour of that building and we have a lot of dead space in that building that we can update to use as classrooms. And if we can house pre-K three and pre-K four, I think that may be a better use, especially if we are planning of moving whatever we're using there and giving that building up instead of giving that building up and make a better use of that building for us.
I think it's a good idea. It's just that we've already paying $600,000 a year and to put money into, a lot of money, build up a property that we don't own may not be wisdom. So I don't know, I think it's a great idea. We do have shortage and we have, it is a lot of moving parts, but $600,000, you build it up and you're paying $600,000 a year. So the question is, is it fiscally or financially responsible?
Wouldn't it be the same question if it became a charter school? How many students would be in that charter school and how much more are we going to pay a year also? It would be the same thing, if I'm correct.
But a charter school, I don't know much about this and I do not know if this is the forum we should be doing that right now, but a charter school students will still be our Linden students, right?
Not necessarily because we have a charter school student we're paying now, $14,000 out of the district.
Yeah, but if, if students come from different cities in here, they have to pay us. We are not, we don't.
They pay the charter school. The charter school is its own separate entity.
Its own separate, yes.
So that's why if, if our students were going to the charter school, we would be paying them. If other districts had sent to the charter school, they would be paying them. It's not, we don't get any money off of it.
It's really not a great idea, I don't think. I know it costs $600,000 a year. I understand that and I know that that's a lot of dollars, but I also know that Linden is growing. Linden is growing and we do not have space to build another school, to, we need all the space that we can get right now, especially, especially to backup, for backup, because those apartment buildings are coming in. And I realize that those apartment buildings are for more, more aimed towards single.
Young people.
Young, young folks, probably, you know, college, whatever, for, for single people, young or old, not really meant for families. However, there are situations where families start somewhere. And it's very expensive to rent or to buy and you have families starting out. It's hard to find, go ahead and go out and try to find a place to rent right now and see how much you're paying and see how much you're getting paid from your job and see if you can afford to do that. It is hard out there and we need to keep all the space that we can get because we are not promised that there will not be families living in those apartments.
Could we do a study? I believe that when, you know, one of the responsibilities fiscal and financial responsibility.
We just had a study.
No, I mean on the charter school and how much it will actually cost us. I know we paying $600,000 rent, all right? And I know that you guys make very, very good points, but can we make us do a study as to, a comparable study on the what if, Mr. Serapilia? What do you think?
We could, I mean, I could calculate something for you guys, so yeah, we could do something on that.
But I'm sure if what Ms. Perkins is going to give us on Thursday about the enrollments, if our enrollments are going up and they've been going up the past few years, I see us more going up higher in the future. So I think we are growing. Linden is growing. We see buildings coming up almost on a yearly basis, almost every two years, there's buildings coming up. And they're not small buildings, they're massive buildings. And over by where the Quick Check in Carvel was, I think it's Elizabeth Avenue in Linden, right? They're about to build more there. So we're not, we're not shrinking.
I'm with you.
Linden is not shrinking. Linden is growing. And we spoke about this a couple of years ago when we wanted to add the addition that we bought at the high school, okay? And we were building the gym, but in essence, we needed more classrooms, so, and we've been growing the past two years and we still haven't done anything.
Parking spot mainly is what we were going to build. That's not a good use of space. But I'm with you on saving money. I'm all for dumping each bit, each cent of that $600,000 a year into air conditioning. I think air conditioning should be our, like, top priority. It is hot in New Jersey. I don't know how you guys do this. I, I don't like the heat. So we, we need air conditioning, should be our absolute top priority in buildings. And I hope that when I'm long gone, that you're making sure that these air conditioning units are coming in. But we can't give up space.
What do you think, Mrs.?
I think that we should take this conversation into our committee meetings where we can further discuss and address our concerns and then bring it back to the public.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I had a couple, if everybody's done.
I have one question.
Okay.
For item 26, in regards to the, the lockdown doors, shades and curtains, do not all schools have that already? And I don't know if you know the info on the spot, but if so, which schools do have?
Well, everyone has something, but a lot of them are homemade, which, I won't say homemade, not that they made them at home, but, and some of them are, like, for instance, like, I won't say cardboard paper, but something along those lines, which there, they are fire rated doors. By putting that on there, it takes away the fire rating, which is, and it's also, like I said, some of it's, I've seen it's like folded up and, you know, they have to kind of pull it down. I don't even know if they have to tape it or something like that. With, with Accrison, they basically do like a felt kind of device where they just kind of install it over the, over the window and it's Velcroed on. They would just simply pull the Velcro off and it would roll down. Like I said, I've seen it sometimes, too, where they've had it like, almost like those windows where they have to kind of like pull everything down. But the bigger concern was the fact on the fire rating on it.
Okay.
I do have a question. Number 30.
Yes.
I need explanation for that.
Well, each, by law, each room that houses pre-K and kindergarten students has to have a bathroom within it. The thinking is that students at this age aren't able to necessarily hold it or, you know, go to the bathrooms by themselves. Two of the rooms that are currently housing kindergarten classrooms at school five and school 10 are in rooms that don't have bathrooms. So it's not that the state says you can't do it, you just need to have a method in place. So I believe for both of these, you know, there's either an aide or somebody who would come down or somebody from the office whenever a student has to go to the bathroom during the course of the day. I know for, I think, school 10, the bathroom is just right across the hallway. I believe school five is something similar to that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
This is where, I think this is what I thought we were talking about to begin with, was the, the small children in these trailers, which you might have a great idea of putting them, you know, in the, at the building. We might make good use of that. That was one of my questions. Thank you. And 29, which we already talked about. Let me go back. 11, oh, we already talked about, you're going to hand us, you're going to give to us the changes that you're making in that SOP. Yeah?
Yes.
That's all I had. I'm done. Sorry, everybody else already asked. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? We're going to move on to the buildings, grounds and securities report.
All right. So again, on Thursday night, the Building, Grounds and Security Committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent and the business administrator, are going to be presenting the following resolutions. Resolution number one is amending a previous board action from July to change the date for the Raway jersey airs to February 17th, 2024, which is also my birthday, if anybody knows. The remaining resolutions are uses of facility. There's a use of facility for McManus for the Fall Festival, a use of facility. A use of facility by the PTA for PTA meetings at Seoul. Resolutions for School Number 4 for Family Zumba Night, Citywide Parade Float, the Linden Regatta. Resolutions at School Number 8 for PTA meetings, Lemonade Sales, Fall Festival, Cultural Fest, Hollywood Shop, Holiday Shop, rather, Holiday Vendor Craft Fair, Bake Sale and Valentine's Day Event. School Number 9 has a holiday fair set up in the gymnasium. The Seoul Middle School is also looking for approval for the PTA to hold a flea market. The Halloween Parade Committee is looking to utilize School Number 1 for its staging area in the parking lot on October 22nd. The Team Triple Threat Foundation is looking at holding basketball practice and mentoring at School Number 4 Gym on Thursdays and Fridays. The Elite Basketball is looking at holding basketball practices at the School Number 6 Gymnasium on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And finally, Bowler's Den, what school team is looking at doing soccer practice at School Number 6 Gymnasium on Wednesdays.
Are there any questions or comments? Moving on to the Planning and Policy Report.
So the Plan and Policy Report, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motion to the Linden Board for approval. So this is a first reading for a current policy, our substance and abuse policy titled Drugs, Alcohol, Steroids and Tobacco. The policies are, there's also a regulation to the policy. The revisions to the policy includes language that states that if a juvenile was in possession of any type of substance or illegal paraphernalia, that it has to be a certain weight before that they, I shouldn't say a certain amount of ounces, before that they can be charged for disorderly conduct. The policy also is updated to state that we provide services to parents to learn more about substance abuse awareness. Each year, we have a series of programs that are offered to parents that provides them with information. The last part of the policy revision is that within the schools, there's a Student Resource Officer. And the policy states that the Resource Officer is not to confirm or deny if a student is under the influence based off of a smell. They would, and they're not to conduct any search on students. So these are the revisions to the policy and the regulation that we are asking for a first reading of approval. Oh, the last piece of the regulation, I apologize. It states that in the past, if a student was suspected to be under substance abuse, we were doing in-house testing. They would go to the nurse's office. Now the policy states that they must go to an affiliated service. So the care station would be the place that our students will go to for any form of drug testing.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, you said there's parental programs about the drug. Is that every month or, because I don't recall any. Every month?
Yes, yes. And a lot of these programs, like we hear what you're saying is that, again, from district level, it is sent out through our Black Board. We do send emails to our parents as well as a text to state, to check your email. On the school level, they do send them out directly as well. But what we're going to do is expand our website so that it is clear and available to everyone. So they know where the resources are and available.
Thank you.
I'm a little confused. So if there's a student that let's say did use what substantiates our proportion to say you need to get help or you smell it on them. Because apparently, and I'm just going to say marijuana is out there now, the use is easier to get than what it used to be. Okay? So now if you smell it, somebody had it, you can smell it on them if they were using it. For some odd reason, it just comes out of their pores. So you say we cannot just approach them.
You can't assume that because they smell like it, that they were smoking. Because you can smell like something because you're in the same room as somebody who may or whatever. You can't assume.
To clarify what I was stating, this is for the School Resource Officer. The School Resource Officer cannot proceed forward. But the Building Principal, the nurse, or anyone in the school that does suspect that a student is under the influence will continue to carry out the next steps to ensure that they're safe.
Okay, thank you.
So that's.
I think to Jen's point too, there also are other indicators that might be stronger indicators in today's day and age. Where you're right, Sam, and it's, it's quite prevalent. You go to most public settings, I mean, parking lots, you can't walk through without smelling it. So people can't have that odor on them, even if they're not, you know, partaking. So I think that there are other indicators that we'd like to look for as well, before we start sending kids out of the building to get tested.
I have a question. I understand that it's more common, the smell of marijuana. The vape detectors that are in the bathroom. A student today told me that the smell on the first floor of the bathroom reeked of marijuana. So does the vape detector smell it and alarm goes off? Or is it just they can go in there and smoke? I don't, I don't get it.
The vape detectors are not in yet. They have not arrived. They are on backwater.
I thought, okay, they're on backwater, you said?
Isn't it, or did we get a?
They needed a, basically a week to get installed at all the, so they want, they're doing it over the November break that we have.
And based on the, based on the demonstration that we did have, it will be able to detect marijuana. Interesting. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, before we go into executive session, we have two guests here, Timothy and Gary from Plymouth Rock and Prudential, who would like to present some information to the board. Welcome, gentlemen. You may approach the podium.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I know it's late and you've been here for a while, so we'll keep this as quick as possible. I'm representing Teachers Insurance Company of New Jersey. Teachers Insurance is a program for any educator.
Could you speak into Mike more?
Sorry. Is that better? Okay. Not just educators, but anyone paid by the Board of Ed in Linden. They can get tremendous rate on their car insurance policies. It's like the old New Jersey manufacturers. We had to work for a company to get them. This is kind of the same thing. So we have a program that Tim's going to talk about called Driven to Inspire. And it's a self-help book program for each educator in your schools. And we want to get out to the schools and present this to the principal and take it from there, kind of thing. Tim's going to speak about the Driven to Inspire program.
Thank you. As Gary mentioned, I work for Plymouth Rock. We own Teachers Insurance of New Jersey. It's a unique auto insurance plan that only people in the education field are eligible for. The premise to it is that teachers and people who work for schools are far better drivers than the masses, right? Anybody here who's a teacher can attest to being a better driver out there. Because of that, our rates are lower than your average insurance company. The rates are less volatile because it's ranked amongst a group of your peers who, they can't do something like get a DUI because they lose their job. They, you know, probably can't have too many speeding tickets because they might drive one of the school vehicles or something like that. So one of the initiatives that we've been putting in place to get the program out there as well as give back to the schools, as Gary had mentioned, is Driven to Inspire. We come with a bunch of books that are anything ranging from, as you mentioned, like self-help, like How to Cope with the Modern Society. As an educator, some of them are just absolutely funny coloring books that are teacher-focused, that people like to enjoy. So what we do is we come into the school, whether it's at an in-service day, after school, when kids go home. Sometimes we meet with the faculty after at a meeting. Or also, I'm going to South Plainfield School next week. We're doing it during the lunch break. They're putting us in the lunchroom from 11 to 1. The faculty lunchroom, not the student lunchroom. We're going to hand out the books and then if people want a free quote on their auto insurance, we'll be there to assist for that as well. So we had met with some, some people on the board two weeks ago. And they thought it was something that we should present to you guys to see if you want us to roll it out to any of your schools.
Well, I have a problem with it because you guys just talking about teachers. What about administrators? What about board members?
Sorry, I thought, yes. Again, it is for anybody who earns a paycheck from the school. It's not just for the teachers. I apologize. It's for administration, faculty, or facilities management. Bus drivers, if, if your bus drivers are paid by the district, they would be included. If they're outsourced, as of right now, they're not included.
But if you're not paid by the district.
Like us.
Like us.
We're working on clarity with that. We have to double-check with their legal, but we will talk to you guys on the side and help you guys out. I don't want it out there. But again, even if they're a substitute teacher, they're just working one or two days a week here and there. As long as they have a current paycheck that says that they work here, they are eligible for it.
Why should somebody leave another company and come with you guys? What type of benefits you get?
So I'll leave some flyers too. That's a great question. Not only is it the savings, right now, the average savings for people switching to teachers is about $847. I've seen as high as $2,000. I've seen as little as $200. If you're paying $1,000 a year, we can't save you, you know, $800 a year, unfortunately. But the other benefits are if the vehicle is on school grounds and vandalized, stolen, there's no deductible. If school asks you to drive from one facility to another or go to some sort of meeting, some sort of professional development or anything, your deductible for collision is also waived while doing that. As well as, I always forget if it's $1,000 or $1,500 worth of school property in your vehicle is also covered, which is not something normally covered. So if you have like a work-issued laptop in your car and it gets stolen, we will cover that under the policy as well.
How could we part of this?
What is it that you're asking, what is it that you're asking the board to do?
So we're, we're asking the, the board, maybe Ms. Perkins as the Superintendent, for access to the school, to see if we could speak to principals or business offices and see if we can set up on sites at the school during one of these events. Whether it be an in-service day, Professional Development Day. We also do educational seminars, like a little Insurance 101. You'd be surprised how many people don't understand what insurance is and why they need it and the different nuances of coverage is, so we can also set up one of those programs as well. We're briefly looking for an introduction.
Mr. Garcia, if we were to let in one vendor, wouldn't it create, wouldn't it open us up to all these other vendors wanting the same service? Or could they just come to and we have workshops and different stuff? Or, you know, like when we have career day, how does that work?
If your question is, would you have to work with other vendors to provide similar opportunities for them to speak? Most likely, right? You can't discriminate or favor one, one vendor over another. But, you know, it would be, it would be, those vendors would have to come to us, obviously, and, and ask for the same opportunity. And then, like we would do with them, if we can do it, it's, it's got to be whether we can reasonably accommodate their request, right? Is there a time that works? It's not going to interrupt our operations. And that's something that, you know, we can discuss amongst ourselves before we give them a final answer, one way or the other.
And just on that point, there are no other teacher-specific products in New Jersey?
No, I understand, but I've seen, even if it wasn't, even if it wasn't an auto insurance product, if it was, if it was a vendor looking to sell some other, or market some other product. And they asked, hey, can we set up a table, you know, in your staff room? Or could we have an hour where we could set up somewhere and staff can come and, you know, ask questions of us? You know, we would, you know, we'd need to obviously consider doing that as well, so that we're not, like I said, discriminating or favoring any, any vendor. But that's something that we could, we can, we can talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can, if you'd like to leave some of the information here, that'd be great.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Alright, well. You want to do that right now? Okay, so we're going to go into executive session, but prior to doing that, because we know it takes quite a bit of time for us, we will ask comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address, as well as listing it. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time. And no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
My name is Craig Hallern, 120 Donaldson Place. First of all, Ms. Fleming, it's great to see you back again. I'm glad I came to this meeting. I'd just like to bring up a few facts. The building that's going to go up by where Quick Check is, it's going to be 300 and something apartments. I believe to break down something like 60% single bedroom, the rest are two bedrooms. The other building that's going up on the other side of Style Street, going towards Railway, is 400 apartments with, I believe, the same breakdown, as far as which apartments. Now, these are only two buildings that are going up and I expect them to be up and functioning within a year. Most of the other apartment complexes that have been built up, like the Citizens Building on Elizabeth Avenue, that's full. Okay? I don't know what the breakdown is in that building, but they're already talking about redeveloping the area between the Citizens Building and Style Street, that whole area. They're already talking about that. Amici's Restaurant, I understand, has been sold. That's going to be redeveloped. Okay? There are plenty of redevelopment plans. So I urge this board to seriously look at not just the next year or so, but the near future and onward. Look at what you're going to need for building to teach art students in this district. There are a lot of people coming and they are going to keep coming. With all the buildings that I believe they have planned to put up, I urge somebody from this board to contact the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, or somebody in those different boards that do exist and ask them, hey, what are you doing here? What, how many buildings are we expecting? How many families? How many people are we expecting? Okay? And I do please urge you to seriously look into this. Because the Quick Check property and the other property on, on the other side of Style Street, going towards Railway, with 400 apartments, that's going to be done, I'd say, no later than three or four months. The one on, taking over for Quick Check, it may take a little bit longer. But these are not small properties. These are big buildings with a lot of people coming in and they're filling up very quickly. So please, and again, I can't stress this enough, don't wait for, to be caught behind the ball. Push forward and look into this and say, hey, we got to start looking at, do we have to seriously think about getting property to build a new building or add to the existing buildings? This is, is a lot of money, not only for the people sitting here, because we all get paid so well to do the jobs that you all do so well. But this is going to cost the taxpayers of this great city of ours a lot of money if we have to start buying property and putting up new buildings. up new buildings. I'm not against doing what we need to do for this, it gets that plan ahead. I would hate to be the administrator that has to go to the city and say, we need $250 million to build a new building. You know, and you hit the taxpayers with that, a lot of people are not going to be happy. They may agree that you need it, but they may not be very happy. So please, look into this with the planning board, the zoning board, whoever you have to, and find out, what are the projections for how many people they expect to be moving in here? Thank you for your time, and I will speak again on Thursday.
Thank you.
I don't know any area big enough to support a high school, that off the top of my head, that we could even purchase, even if we had money to purchase it.
This has been an ongoing conversation, and these sentiments and thoughts have already been in the works and talked about, so we are bridging the gap between us and the city to identify these opportunities.
Perfect.
Hi, everyone, Donna Hernandez, 133 Princeton Road. On my way here, I couldn't look at the whole agenda, but on just buildings, grounds, and security, number six, that holiday fair setup, that date should be a Thursday, not a Friday. And I did check with the PTA VP, and she is, that should be Thursday, for their setup.
For number seven, you said?
Uh, number six.
Oh, I'm sorry, number six?
Yeah.
It's a Thursday?
The date is right, December 14th, it just should be, say, Thursday.
Okay.
Real quick going, about the detectors going into the bathrooms, I feel, once students realize they're there, and I know they've done this in the past, in the stairwells, they will smoke in the stairwells. So maybe that's something to think about, putting them in there as well. Also, about the tickets purchased, for students 15 and under, coming with a parent, parents will do anything for their children, so what's to say that parent walks that child in to a game and leaves? So, I don't know, you may, you know, you do have some parents that may stay, but you will walk that child in, and they can leave. No one's going to know at the front, oh, you came in with, you know, a son, you came in with a daughter, they're not going to stop, I'm leaving. So that's something else to think about. And I apologize, I'm going to read through this very quickly. Good evening, I am speaking tonight as a PTA president, president of the parent band association, and as a parent. I would like to speak about the last two home football games being moved from Friday to Saturday afternoons. Why were they moved, because of the fights that have happened? Well, they fight in the morning, afternoon, and after-school. So do the kids not fight on Saturdays? Because if they do, any time of the day now, a weekend may not make a difference. Did anyone that made this decision take into consideration, the students work on weekends, and I'm sure they told their places of employment, if they play football or cheerleader, that the games were on Fridays, because that's what the schedule said? So now they have to ask for those days off. This is not just for football players and cheerleaders, this is also for all seniors that wanted to participate in homecoming. Friday, September 29th, was going to be the homecoming game. I have been told by parents, and the student council have been told by seniors, to take their applications for homecoming off the ballot, because they have to work Saturdays and cannot take off. Now, marching band members who may have wanted to run for homecoming, cannot, because the Saturdays, marching band have competitions. Did anyone think about the marching band, they meet at the fields for practice, they meet on the field, and practice on the field, and several run-throughs of their show before heading to competition? So now, where will the band be able to practice? Should they be pushed aside and not practice? We all know how important our sports are, and marching band is not a sport, but our members work just as hard as any other team. This Saturday, our competition is at 5:45 PM, so I'm told the band will play at the game and then head to competition. When do they practice their show before competing? Should they be asked to come to the field earlier, before the football players start their practice? That's not fair to our band members. October 21st is senior afternoon, not senior night, for the football cheerleaders and band members. Well, once again, our senior band members may not part, be part of the senior afternoon game, if it's still a Saturday, because we have a competition. We do not know our time of competition until the beginning of that week, so the band may not participate. Is it fair to our band members and seniors to miss it? I'm sure they have been looking forward to it. It is not fair to any of our seniors not to be part of these two important dates, because some kids can't control themselves. Also, for many of our football players, this is their last ever home football game, and may only, and may be only their only senior night they have. With other, with having the games on Saturdays, to them, it will have to be remembered as Saturday afternoon, not Friday nightlights. Have these valid points been taken into consideration? Lastly, the marching band parent association runs the concession stand. Having games on Friday, we know from past games what to expect. Saturdays, we do not. And also, if we can have the concession stand open, because I need parents to help. Some parents, like myself, work on Saturdays. The money raised from the concession stand pays for the band banquet. If we cannot have the concession stand open the last two home games and raise the money needed, who's going to pay for their band banquet? If they are going to miss out on homecoming and senior afternoon, it is not fair to them to miss out on their banquet, and I will not let this happen. Has anyone thought keeping the Friday night games, having the other team buy tickets for the game ahead of time, maybe having a roster of our players, cheerleaders, band members, and having them have their parents, guardians, and siblings come to the game? In previous, at our bonfires, we've had the students get a wristband, they were only able to come into the games with their wristband and student ID. If you don't have that, you don't come into the game. So I'm usually in the concession stand or in the back feeding our band members, and I haven't seen any of you at the recent games, and if you have been, I apologize. But hopefully, since you moved the game to Saturday, we will see you there, so we all can see if moving the game to Saturday helps with no fights. Thank you.
Thank you.
And sorry, this just gets me very upset.
May I say something?
Yeah, we've...
Mr. Garcia, can I, can I...
I don't know what you're going to say, but yeah, you certainly...
You know, just, Mrs. Hernandez, about a week ago, the board, and the police department, and the city of Linden had a meeting. We were discussing the same issue, which is the violence that occurred after the banner, after the game. Some of the recommendations that was made, was made by the police department of Linden, because they were concerned about the violence, not only to the students, but the police members themselves, right, some, you know, one of the police cap...
Can I say that? She could share what happened?
I wouldn't speak about the incident that occurred.
All right, so, the police department recommended, this was one of the recommendations from the police department, that we should move the games to Saturday. Now, we are still, even if the games were moved, we know that homecoming is very, very important. So I know both games were moved to Saturday, but we are still trying to figure out whether or not, the game, we have a game on the 29th, right?
30th.
The 30th, homecoming, and we are still trying to see if we could do the homecoming on the 30th, on the Friday night, even if it was moved, we are still trying to see if we can. So, it is hard on all of us, and this is a very, very, very hard decision that we are making right now. And, I, you know, I know how you feel, and... What I could say, maybe let's see what happens on the 21st, and then, if it's time, we could possibly make a determination for the 29th. Is it in black and white, or 20...
Nah.
It is Saturday, is there any way that, let's assume the 29th, we could still change it back to the Friday? Or, or is it built in stone, once we said it, it cannot be changed back? Can it be changed?
You probably need to talk to your athletic director, and the other administrators who are scheduling and nailing things down, and the, you know, the chaos that might ensue, if you try to change it at the last minute. I'll just say, I mean, I'll speak for myself, you know, as a parent with two kids who play sports, you know, I empathize with everything that you said, and I understand the inconvenience that scheduling changes can make. This particular scheduling change was brought about for what I consider to be good reason. You're seeing a lot of trends with public schools throughout the state of New Jersey, modifying their, the scheduling of football games, either starting them earlier on Friday nights, or playing them on Saturday afternoons, to address behavioral concerns, and some of the things that tend to lead to those behavioral concerns, that are more likely to happen before a 7 o'clock kickoff on Friday night than they are before a 12 o'clock kickoff on Saturday. And I'm talking about students pre-gaming, in a manner that I'm sure none of us wish they would, but are not naive enough to think that they don't. You know, so they come in to that game, you know, a little rowdier. So this is a trend, it's not something that anybody here took pleasure in doing. Anytime you have to make a scheduling change, you're going to inconvenience someone, whether they're kids that work, kids in the band, kids on the soccer team, or other sports that have a game on Saturday, or kids who might not be able to go on Friday night because they work, or they have games. So, I empathize, I think I speak for the board when we say we empathize with you, I hope you understand that it's not a decision that we made lightly, or that we take pleasure in doing, it's one that we think we had to make, in order to ensure our number-one priority, which is to make sure that everyone, students, staff, members of the community, can feel comfortable coming to that game, and knowing that they're not going to have to walk through any sort of misbehavior, in order to get their car, or get to their bus, or walk home after that game is over.
I know the only other thing, option, we were thinking about, is that possibly, as Mr. Garcia mentioned, starting the game earlier. Like instead of starting the game at 7:00, starting the game at 5:00. We, all these, we have so much, we were thinking about all the different options we have, and that is one that we still have on the table, whether or not we could actually start a game earlier, as opposed to the time it actually starts. So, I guess in committee, we will all go back into committee and just make discussions as to whether or not we could do that. I don't know, but I know, all the decisions, though hard, was made...
I just don't see, if you're, you know, maybe kids don't fight on weekends, I don't know, but if they're going to fight during the week, Monday through Friday, the morning, afternoon, or after-school, what makes Saturday any different?
It was...
I don't think every situation is the same. I think the reason you're seeing this, two things, right, the reason you're seeing more and more schools start their games, either at 5:00 or 6:00 on Friday night, or move them to Saturday afternoon, is because there's a belief that I think is now supported by data, because this is, this has been happening for a good year or two now, that this trend has started. There's a belief that I think, again, is supported by data, that the kids are less likely to engage in other activities, that would make them come into that game more likely to misbehave, right?
Well, I can tell you, they do smoke at the games, because I've had to tell our security and the police, because the marijuana smell came right into the concession stand, and that's a small little box area, and that doesn't leave very well.
Understood, and I think, again, I'm not an expert on the subject, but I don't know that marijuana, I don't know too many people that get violent on marijuana, I could be wrong on that, but I think the concern is the alcohol, right, and the drinking before games, which seems to be very prevalent in the lead-up to Friday night 7 o'clock games, and seems, seems less likely to happen, if you're going to kick off at 1 o'clock or 12 o'clock on a Saturday afternoon. And again, I think that that's supported by some data. You know, we'll see how it works here. Again, this is not something that, you know, anyone takes pleasure in, hey, let's reschedule, let's inconvenience people with a change of plans, but it's something that I think multiple people in the community, multiple community stakeholders thought was in the best interest of the people who want to attend that game.
No, and I know in the past, it has been brought up to move the games to Saturday, and it's been talked about several years, and they just haven't been done, but, okay, hope to see you Saturday.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the audience? Anyone online?
Rob Mengele, LHS High School, LHS Social Studies teacher, LEA president. I'll have more on Thursday, specifically about some of the wonderful upcoming events that LEA members are hosting in conjunction with other members of our school community, a number of them are up for approval on Thursday. I do hope the Board of Education will take the steps to approve our building usage for those events. The two that I saw were the Hispanic Heritage Night on the 4th of October. We are working in conjunction with members of, at, LEA members in the World Language and ESL departments, are working in conjunction with community folks to build a wonderful Hispanic Heritage Night program, and then our Fall Festival at McManus Middle School, both LEA-sponsored events, hopefully be able to make it out, it'd be lovely to see you. We opened our buildings, and Ms. Fleming put it pretty well, with the heat, back September 7th and 8th, it was incredibly squeltering, and as I made my way through the buildings, it was incredible to see the learning taking place, the way that our staff members were meeting students' needs while also working to take care of themselves. It has always been said that folks who work in education consistently put others in front of themselves, and that was certainly the case as I saw, and as I moved through the buildings. I'll have more on Thursday, but, you know, I always hope that all decisions get made with both staff and students in mind, and I know we've talked about it, and I know we will continue to discuss, so, thanks, have a good night, team.
Thank you. Confirming there isn't anyone online? If there are no further comments from the public, we will go into executive session. I'd like to ask for a motion to go into executive...
Motion to go into executive... Sorry, people started saying at the same time. Motion to go into executive session.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Centron? Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrillo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Okay.
All in agreeance?
Yes.
Yes.
We will now like to conclude, and adjourn this tonight's meeting.
adjourn?
All in agreeance?
Yes.
Roll call?
Oh, everyone was in agreeance? Roll call?
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.